Before you, we are believers, we are non-believers, we are agnostics. We pray for all of us. There's two truths in the Bible, Lord, that you've given us. One is life versus death. And we see choices sometimes people make that result in death. May you be with us and recognize those choices that we're making in all of us, not only in our own lives, but in our relationships with those around us, that not only maybe we have life, but abundant life. The second thing that we talked about that you gave us was lies versus truth. And truth is reality. It's how things function, Lord. And for all of us, whether we're believers or not, we need to understand the reality of what's going on, and so that you could share that with us. And that reality really is how things work. And especially if we could have the reality of how things really work in our relationships with each other. We thank you for that, and we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
All right. Please stand, remove your covers for the flag suit.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and just for all.
Thank you all. We're gonna start with a roll call. Joel?
Here.
Kathleen? Rick?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Indra?
Here.
Victoria?
Here.
Mayor Shurf is here, and staff is present. We do seem to be missing Rob, but I thought he was gonna be here. He's gonna be a little bit late, so we will put him on as tardy, but to attend. I am going to open the quasi judicial hearing. At this time, I will open the public hearing to consider the application filed. Ordinants vacating a common property line between tax lots 21 and 22 of MAP number 36-5-17-CC. Actually, sorry. Indra, did you have something you wanted to add before we started?
I'm sorry, I wasn't quick enough, but I would like to move C out of the consent agenda on 5C, the resolution authorizing the city manager to pursue source water protection, out. I would like to just hear a little bit more about what that is, and maybe discuss it before we vote on it.
Okay. I'm gonna confer with Aaron, City Manager. We have a request to take Consent Item C out for further discussion. Would you... Do we need to be voting on this tonight, or can we pull this out to put in a workshop? Or do you need just more discussion tonight, before you vote on it?
It could be tonight. It could be tonight, or it could be in a workshop, depending on what you think.
So I would ask the City Manager, is this item time sensitive?
Well, we may be able to answer whatever questions you may have this evening. You can just start, basically start this. We'll provide an opportunity for you to have a discussion. You can either vote on it separately, or you can vote on it with consent. So you can pull it and vote on it separately after discussion, and then vote on the rest of the consent if you want. Or you could pull it, and we can look at another date.
Do you have enough information to give us a little bit of summary tonight?
I believe that I can talk through what the intent is. I don't have a presentation prepared for you, but any questions you have, I should be able to answer. I do ask that you either leave it on consent or vote on it separately tonight, because I do need to apply. If you do approve it, we would need to apply before the end of the month, so we might run out of time if we move it to a future agenda.
Perfect. So it sounds like if you could star the item tonight for further discussion and questions, at least we can vote on it tonight, 'cause it is time sensitive.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Well, basically, we'll star this item, C on the consent agenda. We'll open it up for further questions, and it looks like Jason will be available to answer questions for that before we vote on it.
Are we voting on whether to do that?
No, we're just gonna put it as a start item, and so basically it would have talking points at the beginning to consent agenda, but it'll stay on.
Before, we've had to have to add two other councilors.
Our council rules when it comes to consent calendar items, any one council member can ask for a consent item to be starred.
That's fine. I think the votes would be there, but I just don't know if that's how we have to do it.
Perfect, perfect. All right. So just to clarify, we're gonna take Item C on the consent agenda. We're gonna star that item tonight, so it will have discussion before the consent agenda is voted on. With that, I'm gonna continue opening our session. I'm going to start over. At this time, I will open the public hearing to consider the application for the quasi judicial item A. I already outlined what it was. The application is for ordinance vacating a common property line between tax lot 2100 and 2200 of MAP number 36-05-17-CC. We will begin the hearing with a staff report, followed by a presentation by the applicant, but actually it'll just be Brad. Statements by persons in favor of the applications, statements by persons in opposition of the application, and an opportunity for additional comments by applicant and staff. After that has occurred, the public comments portion will be closed, and the matter will be discussed and acted upon by the council. So I'll turn it over to Brad for presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item before you tonight is a property line vacation, as the mayor stated. They are requesting one line to be removed, and the purpose is that they want to construct a new, about 7,600 square foot, light industrial warehouse type building on the property. So this is the corner of southeast J and 11th Street. So that's where we're at. The city public works yard is just to the right, just to the east. And then there's another property that the city recently acquired to the north. The property you can see represented here on the corner does not have any existing development on it, it's largely undeveloped at this time. So here is an aerial photo of the property we're talking about. Again, there's southeast J on the south, and then southeast 11th, and then the property line to be removed is currently north-south there between those two properties. Here is a conceptual layout of what they intend to construct on the property. They do propose four-unit, kind of four-bay building, one ingress egress on 11th and one ingress egress on J Street. But again, tonight, the application is just to remove the line, it doesn't really pertain to the construction of the project. So here's the two criterion that are required for a property line vacation. Staff did review these criterion, and we found that they can be met. We did send out notices of the application, no public comments were received. And here's your call to action for tonight. There's really no cost implication for the city. Call to action date, June 7th, although tonight is preferred. And then motions are there on the screen for you.
Perfect, thanks, Brad. Before we open up to questions, I'm gonna pause, because I actually missed a couple items here. Back to this quasi judicial hearing. Is there anybody present who wishes to challenge the authority of the council to hear this matter? Seeing none. Do any councilors wish to abstain from participating in this hearing, or declare a potential conflict of interest? Seeing none. Are there any councilors who wish to disclose discussions, contact, or other expertise information that have received prior to this meeting regarding this application? Seeing none. This is actually a hearing to decide of the... The decision of the council will be based upon specific criteria which are set forth in the Development Code. Any testimony which applies to this case are noted in the staff report, which was just done by Brad. If you wish to have a copy of this report, please write on a note and hand to the city manager, and one will be provided. It is important to remember, if you fail to rise to an issue with enough detail to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to this issue, you will not be able to appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on this issue. The staff report was just given, so now we'll open it up to questions. Actually, sorry, we'll open it up to public comment. No, actually, questions. Yes, sorry. It's been a long day for me. Do you guys have any questions in regards, council? Rick?
Brad, I believe, I just want clarification. Brad, I think you pointed out one property line for vacation on your diagram, but our report indicates two property lines. So tonight's action would cover both property lines, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, council, for that clarification. There's a difference in the original subdivision from, you know, decades ago versus what the tax assessor identifies. But yes, if you could, in your motion, identify both.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Perfect. And just a question to Brad, do we have the applicant present, or does he wanna weigh in?
I know that Robbie was... But he's not yet.
Okay. All right. Since we don't have a presentation with that, any further questions from council? Or staff? No? Okay. At this time, we'll open up to public comment. Is there anybody within public, or within the audience here, that wants to stand up and speak in favor of this application, or to oppose this application? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to staff for any discussion or action. Rick?
I'd like to move to adopt the ordinance vacating the common property lines between tax lots 2100 and 2200, MAP number 36-517-CC, and have it read by title only, first reading.
Okay, there's a motion on the table for first reading. Second by... Kathleen was first? Perfect. So we have a motion on the table for first reading with a second. Any further discussion before we go into vote? Seeing none? Roll call vote. Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
You unanimously passes for first reading.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants pass vacating the common property lines between tax lots 2100 and 2200 of MAP number 36-517-CC.
Thank you. So I'd be bringing it back to council for action on second reading? Indra?
I move to adopt the ordinance vacating the common property lines between tax lots 2100 and 2200 of MAP number 36-0517-CC, and have it read title only, second reading.
Motion on the table for second reading, with a second from Rick, it looks like. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
You unanimously passes second reading.
An ordinance of the council of the city of Grants pass vacating the common property lines between tax lots 2100 and 2200 of MAP number 36-517-CC.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on to council actions, we have a resolution approving a fee waiver at Riverside Park for the concerts in the park season. Looks like Brad will be giving us a presentation.
It may be just somewhat of a point of order, Mayor. Didn't catch this ahead of time, but you've got two... The next two items on your agenda both relate to concerts in the park. The way it's listed on the agenda, the first one is for the fee waiver, the second one is for the use.
Okay.
If you don't approve the use, the first one is moot.
So shall we flip that around?
So I'm, you know, just one idea.
Perfect, perfect. So with that clarification, we will actually be entertaining the resolution for the use first? Is that what your recommendation is?
Thank you, and I actually have both of them combined in the presentation, but...
So when we make the motion, we'll motion to approve the use permit first?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Yes, and on this application, the... Yep, thank you. Yes, and on this application, the Chamber of Commerce is the applicant here, and we do have representatives from the chamber here. Terry and Chris here in the audience, and they will be prepared to speak to the application. Any questions? Josh Hopkins, our park superintendent, is also here tonight and can help out with any other technical questions. So the purpose of this, and again, we've combined your next two items on the agenda here into the same presentation. The first one is to allow a commercial activity in Riverside Park, and then the other one is to grant or not grant a waiver of the fees for the same event, concerts in the park. It relates to your council goals to of leadership by creating quality events for locals and visitors alike. So as I'm sure you all know, the Chamber of Commerce has hosted this event for many years, 35 years. That was surprising to me when I read that. I didn't know it had gone on that long. But as you may recall, the last couple of years, they have not been in Riverside Park. They have been out at the fairgrounds, and so they are looking to return to Riverside Park this year. It is scheduled to run Tuesday evenings, as it has in the past, June 10th through July 15th, with no event on that July 1. So there's, that would be five evenings in the park that are that we're talking about tonight. So municipal code 6.46110 talks about commercial activities. It does require large major events to come to the council for approval. You actually have two tonight on your agenda. There'll be one later in the evening. We have an adopted fee schedule that we that the council has approved that regulates the fees for different types of events, and those are listed on the screen behind me. There's a $50 banner fee. There's a $312 alcohol fee, 965 Riverside Pavilion fee, $75 large group application fee for a total of $1,402.50 for this particular event. And again, that's across all five evenings. There's also a $1,650 refundable deposit that the chamber has also requested to be waived. So in terms of the deposits, those are, those kind of start at around $75 for like a smaller event, and then it kind of tiers up depending on the size of the event. So in this case, it is $250 per day in this case, so you have times five. And then in terms of the event, and of course the chamber can provide much more background on this, but it is a free concert series, which, as they stated in their application, is really the reason for their request for the fee waiver. There is no commercial activity like you often see in terms of the selling of goods for profit. This is a free series. There is live music, 6:30 to 8:30 on those Tuesday nights. They are estimating about 2,000 attendees. It's family friendly, and they are proposing providing alcohol and food. So here is the layout that they submitted to staff. If you've been to the event in the past, it's going to be at a different location within Riverside Park. So let me see if I can. So here is the, just to the right of this slide here is the highway. And so we're coming in, and then here's the pavilion at the bottom of the screen here. So just imagine yourself being kind of on the riverbank looking into the park. So again, the pavilion here, and then they're proposing the stage to be located in the parking lot area with vendors to the right and left of the stage, and then the food trucks also here. If you're on the stage looking out into the park to the left, they also have porta potties, washing station that would be brought in for those for those five evenings. They are also proposing for most of the seating to be out in the grassy area, which will should be nice. There'll be some shade that will be provided there for folks. In terms of the cost implication, the potential waiver of the park reservation fee that would have an impact to, again, about $1,400. The deposit amount is not shown there because, again, we typically get most of that back. You know, occasionally, you see a broken sprinkler head or some other kind of minor damage that gets done in these larger events. And so that, if it was retained, obviously would have a cost implication if you waived the entire deposit in case if there was something damaged. We would incur the cost to repair that if there wasn't a deposit. Call to action we have for tonight. The chamber is, you know, anxious to keep this thing moving, and so we want to encourage that. Alternatives, you can approve the request to allow the commercial activity at Riverside Park. You can approve the request for the waiver on the fees. You can, of course, deny one or both requests. That is an alternative. And then there's a potential motion for the council.
Yeah, thanks, Brad. So we're in, okay, so we're waiving fees across the board. That doesn't mean that we're waiving any indemnifications or insurance or anything like that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if you, you're saying, though, if there was some kind of damage that could be attributed to the event, that that would fall on the city rather than the?
Well, the deposit amount that we require for these larger events is, you know, for that purpose. They submit the deposit upfront, and then if we do have some damage, then we take that off of the deposit to fix. So I'm just saying, if you waived the deposit, then we would not have a deposit associated with concerts in the park series. So then any damage, you know, would be back on us because we wouldn't have charged that deposit.
Well, I don't understand why it would have to be back on us. And the chamber and the city hopefully are good neighbors and play well together, and I would assume that they want to keep a good relationship with us. Why would we necessarily absorb that? I would think that if it was damage that was attributed to the event, I would imagine that they would be willing to step up. I would hope that you would pursue that negotiation. Either that, or maybe we will, maybe council will tonight.
Sure. I mean, you know, again, that's the, that's the point of why we created the fee schedule the way we did, just so that deposit amount is there. We do the same thing for both, Nick. We do the same thing for many other events. But you make a good point.
And in those events, if there's damage, the city absorbs it? Or?
Well, we get deposits. So we take them, we take any repairs out of that money.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Kathleen and then Rick?
So can you clarify, the food trucks and the alcohol trucks, they would pay their own fee separate from the?
I'm going to look to Josh on that. Yeah. So there's not, yeah, there's not a fee to the city for those. You can ask the chamber. There probably some other information she can provide on that. But for the city, we would not be charging any kind of separate.
So it'd be all together, one event, and everybody's included?
Correct.
Rick and then Indra?
So I'd like to expand on that a little bit further. On slide number four, there's a $312 alcohol fee. So if the chamber's not paying that, it's been indicated the people selling alcohol would not pay that either. So what does that fee do, the alcohol fee?
Well, it's kind of, you know, it's an administrative fee. We do, the police department, you know, reviews those applications when they come in. And so it kind of helps to cover administrative costs for the, that the city incurs in terms of doing some of those background work.
So do we, so you don't care who pays the fee? Is it possible, instead of the chamber paying the fee, that the food trucks and the alcohol vendors pay that fee?
You know, council, that might actually be a better question for the chamber, because that's really between them and their vendors.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, can we get representative from the chamber to come up for, join in this question session? So I guess the question's going to revolve back around, it sounds like what the couple of counselors are asking is, if the fees are, if these fees are waived for you, do you guys impose any fees on the vendors that you're using?
No, we do not.
Okay. Indra?
That was my question.
Guess that was Indra's question. Sorry if I took that from her. Any other questions for either staff or Rob?
Yeah, thanks, Terry. So is, how does a, how does a vendor become on the preferred list, so to speak, to be allowed to be at this event? Is it first come, first served, or how does the chamber select it?
It's an application process. And traditionally speaking, most of our vendors have been with us for a period of time, but any vendor could apply. If I could differentiate perhaps the food vendors, and when we talk about alcohol, it's singular. Not all of the food trucks are allowed to serve alcohol. We contract with Wild River Brewing. They serve beer and wine. We have very strict rules. We provide armbands that have little tear-off tabs, and each person can have a maximum of three drinks. I hope you've all been to the event. It's very family friendly. It's not a rock and roll drinking party. There are, I think, four food trucks up there, but then the other quote-unquote vendors most typically would be people like Evergreen Federal Bank, Seroptimist, people providing free either giveaways, services, or events for kids. This is very much geared toward family and kids.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's a great event. I'm glad it's back.
Thank you.
So is there an opportunity for new vendors to break into this, or is it a closed group? Or how does that work?
Yeah, I think, and Christie, if I can defer for a little bit of help. Christie's our events and programs manager. She's been putting this on for eight of the 35 or 40 years it's been going on, so I'd let you talk to that.
So what was your question again?
Is there an opportunity for new vendors to break in, or is it?
Certainly. There's always room for new vendors. We encourage new vendors, as long as they are family-friendly based. We encourage that. As far as food vendors, we limit. We limit to at least four, because we want our vendors to be profitable, and we do not charge them a fee, as long as they agree to feed our 50 volunteers and band members that at least one of the evenings. So that's how they're able to waive the fees.
Thank you.
Perfect. Any other council have any questions? Any regards to this?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Terry.
With your permission, can I give just a little added color to what Brad has offered?
Absolutely. And we'll, I guess what I want to do to preface that is, is once we get done talking about the fee waiver, I'm going to have Brad roll right into the use permit, so we can actually, you know, do one backwards or other. But go ahead and add your.
Yeah, thank you for that. Just a rewind, and I think you all know, but you know, the chamber does work in several areas, you know, economic development, workforce development, community development. Some of those things overlap. Concerts in the Park has been our gift to the community under the community development umbrella for nearly 40 years. The chamber does not make any money at this event. Actually, as I look back at the history, I just finished our budgets, as you're about to. More often than not, we're in the red. So this is not a revenue generation for us. This is space-making and our gift back to the community. As I came on as the president and CEO after this event, having been at the fairgrounds, and we're very, very grateful for the fairgrounds, and it was a well-attended event, it's named Concerts in the Park. And I want to share with the community the opportunity to be back in our parks and celebrate with family and make our parks kid-friendly and provide fun, free events in our park in the way that our parks are intended to be used. And so I'm not up here asking for a waiver of fees so that I could make additional money for the concerts. We had intended this year to be back in the band shell, and that piece is not complete. And so by setting up a stage every single week, having things a little bit more mobile, trying to address sources of power, adding some additional porta potties that we didn't have at the fairgrounds, our expenses are up this year, and we hope that the city is willing to partner in waiving that fee for us.
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah.
Any further questions in regards to the fee wave? Okay. Brad, if you could continue on with the presentation for the use permit, and then we can go from there. Thank you.
Yes. Well, Mayor, I actually completed with the staff presentation. We kind of incorporated the use. So the use is, are these events here that I show on the screen.
Okay.
And then the layout for the use is the map here. So.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Yep.
So any further questions from council in regards to the use permit? Look, Kathleen, Eric?
Discussion.
What's that?
Discussion.
I'm asking for final questions. Eric?
Are there any issues with insurance and the alcohol? How's that managed? Not sure. Just throwing that out there, just off the top of my head, thinking about that.
Sure. I don't know. Karen, are you able to comment on that?
So with all of our special events, our city requires them to get their own private insurance to be a part of it. All of those types of things, if they're going to have alcohol injuries, first goes to that level of insurance for them to run it. It's not really us running it type of a thing. It's them.
Thank you.
Perfect. Final call for any questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Brad. At this point, we'll open it up to public comment. So the public will be afforded time to come up to the podium and discuss anything in regards to this particular item that we've been discussing on the screen. Any people from the public want to come up and keep the discussion to this particular site? Thank you.
Well, I know, I've done a lot of that, of this, the concerts in the park, and I'm really glad to see it back. I'm glad we're talking about it. I'm glad the park can be clean enough to have it. And at the same time, I'm a little worried about that. I just hope that, you know, people have done due diligence to keep things clean, and they think about the fact that, you know, since you're going to have children there, that they can wander, and they have to go back, especially that area underneath the bridge that you guys know where the, you know, the, whatever you want to term it, has camp down there. Because I know that I have, however many pictures you want to put forth, I have of them as far as dangers that are below that bridge. So I'll close with that. Well, actually, I'll close with, I love the fact of this being back, and I hope it stays back. And I want to say that you guys working on it, the park service has done amazing with it. And so as the city cops, when I've seen it before, it's always been amazing. So.
Can you end with your name? I forgot to ask you to say that. Sorry, my fault.
Shoney Nelson, Grants Pass resident.
Thank you. Any further comments? Come on up and again, state your name before you start. Sorry about that.
Hi there, Melissa Hughes, Grants Pass resident. And I just really want to quickly throw my support behind this. I represent a nonprofit organization that has had a booth at Concerts in the Park, and I just want to say that it is a wonderful opportunity for local businesses. The application is extremely accessible, and the chamber staff is extremely helpful with it. I recommend to anybody who owns local businesses that want to get in front of the community and engage a bunch of incredible people to participate in Concerts in the Park. And so like I said, as somebody who is a local business representative, this is a wonderful opportunity for our community and businesses alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for discussion or and/or motion. Indra and then Kathleen.
I just want to say I am so glad it's back in Riverside Park. And then also, besides the vendors and things going on, I know you get a lot of sponsors from businesses in the community, so it is a whole community effort. And many years ago, my business received a great plaque. It's beautiful. I still have it for sponsoring concerts in the park. So it's a great event. It's free, and so I am for waiving that fee.
Kathleen and then Rob?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that. I think it's great to have the concerts back in the park, and I would say that I would vote for waiving the fees but keeping the deposit fee, just in case there are repairs that need to be made, if anything has gotten damaged, that the city wouldn't be responsible for that. And because it's refundable.
Rob?
Yeah, I'd just like to completely agree with what Kathleen just said. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Then I would be looking for some action and reminding council that we do need to work on the use permit before we work on the wave. So I'd be looking back to council for action. Victoria?
I move to approve the resolution allowing commercial activity and to, commercial activity to allow concerts in the park.
So there's a motion for the, to approve the resolution, commercial activity at Riverside Park for the concerts in the park season. A second from Rick. Any further discussion? A roll call vote. Victoria?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
You unanimously passed. I'm gonna bring it back to the council to see if we have any action on the second item, waiving fees. Joel?
So I'm, I move to approve a resolution that allows the commercial activity that we already voted on, and to grant a waiver of the park reservation fee, but still keep the damage fee deposit at Riverside Park for the concert in the park season.
We have a motion on the table, a second. Second by Rob. Any further discussion? If not, we'll do vote. Uh, Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
You unanimously passed. Next on the agenda is a resolution adopting urban forest management plan as guiding, as guiding documents for Urban Tree Advisory Committee. And we have a presentation set forth.
Dean Council, Mayor Josh Hopkins, Park Superintendent, here tonight to present the Urban Forest Management Plan for council consideration. So, subject in summary, this is a resolution adopting the Urban Forest Management Plan as a guiding document for the Urban Tree Advisory Committee. Its relationship to council goals is leadership by effectively structuring and focusing the community's efforts of what is a council advisory committee. Just a little background here, the Urban Tree Advisory Committee, referred to as the UTAC, has been a council advisory committee since nineteen eighty-eight. It provides recommendations on developing and implementing programs and activities that promote, protect, and enhance the urban forest as a part of the Tree City USA program. The UTAC assists with community education, Arbor Day events, and ensuring tree planting regulations aligned with our city tree codes. During the twenty twenty-four strategic planning session, the UTAC established a goal for creating an urban forest management plan. During meetings throughout twenty twenty-four, they worked diligently to accomplish this, which culminated in the February tenth meeting, where they voted unanimously to recommend city council review and adopt the finalized version of the Urban Forest Management Plan. The Urban Forest Management Plan, which is in everyone's packets right now, details the vision, mission, values, goals, objectives, strategies, and implementation for managing urban forest within the Grants Pass urban growth boundary. The UTAC is set to oversee and implement the plan, and also report progress annually to city council. Usually in April, we do an Arbor Day proclamation, so it made sense to kind of line up those reports with that timeframe as well. The plan sets goals of increasing the urban tree canopy coverage to forty percent by twenty twenty forty, as well as diversifying tree species to promote a healthy, pest- and disease-resistant urban forest. And the Urban Forest Management Plan will enhance the UT, UTAC's effectiveness and serve as a roadmap for fostering a healthy, more livable community in the city of Grants Pass. As far as staff resources go for this, they're very minimal. The plan itself was created by a volunteer committee. There will be minor staffing resources of just half-time of uploading the plan, if adopted, to the applicable sections of the city website. Call to action is at council discretion. We have several alternatives on here, which include adopting the Urban Forest Management Plan as prepared, amending the Urban Forest Management Plan, or moving the topic to an additional information gathering workshop. Additionally, you can deny the request and resolution, and there is a potential motion on the screen. Questions?
Thank you, Josh. Any questions for Josh? Uh, Rick?
Thank you, Josh. Could you go back to slide four? On the forty percent canopy, where does that apply? Commercial, residential, private, public streets? And how extensive is that?
So that would be all of the above. Essentially, the city has the ability to really manage the public and semi-public right-of-ways and public properties we own. But we also have other programs that encourage planting of trees and private properties, as well as even some commercial activities as well. For the next obvious question, we're currently, as of a twenty twenty-one report, at about twenty-three percent in tree canopy coverage. Additionally, it says we got about thirty-two percent of permious non-tree. That would be like grasses and water. And then the rest, forty-five percentage, is asphalt and concrete. So the idea is, by focusing their efforts, we'll be able to better prioritize where we're planting trees and strategically targeting areas where we don't have the canopy coverage. We're looking forward to help fill in those gaps.
Okay, so we have a civil maple in our backyard, and it took about forty, forty years to get to the point where it's forty percent coverage. So I'm having a little difficulty with twenty forty. I realize it's a nice goal to shoot for, but I'm not sure it's attainable unless you have trees that are very vigorous.
I think with a lot of these plans, when they get created, you do kind of set really high standards with the idea that you're going to proactively approach trying to hit those goals. But, you know, the forty percent target is what the tree committee was looking for, as far as what they'd like to try to work towards. A lot of that involves right tree, right place, even having the availability to plant in some locations, as well as filling in some properties that potentially don't really have the coverage that we need. You look at our large parking lots, Winco, Walmart, those types of things. There's a lot of trees in those areas that could definitely be replaced to help offset some of that cost. But it is one of those things, the target is high, but most, any type of plan like this, the target is.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, Mayor, just want to add one. So when, when, when landscape plans are submitted to the city, and we're looking at canopy, we actually don't look at the amount of canopy for the tree as it's planted. We look at the projected canopy coverage at maturity. So there's a, there's a table that gives us the species, and then it tells you what at maturity that canopy coverage would be. So to your point, counselor, if it took forty or fifty years to get to that coverage, whatever the, uh, arborists who have studied these species have said, you know, we think this particular species in twenty-five years will be this coverage. That, that's actually the number that we're using. I just, I just wanted to clarify. Yeah.
Perfect. Victoria, and then Rob?
My question was about, well, I, I have a few questions, but can you back to the slide with the forty percent, the one we were just on, which is slide four? Can you, what was the reasoning behind increasing it forty percent? I noticed on page three in our packet that it talks about science-based decision-making and some other things. Why, why forty percent? Just, can you tell me a little bit more about that?
So as a part of this process, the Urban Tree Advisory Committee reviewed other plans from other jurisdictions, like-sized jurisdictions, and that was around the target that most of the other jurisdictions were shooting for as well, which is kind of what helped create that number.
Perfect. Thank you. Rob, and then Joel?
Yeah, so, um, some of this might, might just be in, in verbiage that needs to be reviewed. But what I am a little concerned with, on page twenty-two of the packet, number one, coordinate, it says that the committee will be composed of representatives of the city government, et cetera, et cetera. The committee will be responsible for overseeing the implementation of the urban, urban forest management plan. And when it says that the committee is going to be responsible for this, I'm not really sure how the city, how the committee can be, number one. And then that brings me to what I'm more concerned with, is for instance, when we had Bill Lovelace talk about, last year, a couple of years ago, talk about trees that, kind of at a different note, that the city required him to install in certain commercial applications, trees that were required. And then twenty-five years later, when those same trees and the species that he was required to put in then destroyed the pavement and the sidewalk in those areas, he then was being required to go back and do the repairs. So I'm concerned that, you know, who actually is choosing the species of the trees, and who is actually responsible for making the right choices there? Because, you know, there's a lot of talk about canopy, but so far, I haven't seen any talk about the roots, and the, and the inevitable effects that they can have. So I'm concerned with that. Maybe you could address that first, and then I have a second similar concern.
So for the tree species, when they're being selected, the city does have lists of what are and are not approved street trees. Our list is based on the size of your planter space, plus based on like overhead utility lines. We've got different sizes with a bunch of different genuses that have been discovered to be a lot more advantageous to an urban setting, as opposed to, you know, what was going on twenty-five years ago. My guess is they were all maples or sweetgums. But regardless of the case, we do in the city create that list. It's ran through with our urban forester position, as well as through like our engineering side and things like that. And we keep that list up to date as new species come on board. So when it comes to who's selecting those things, that's city staff, based on what the industry standard is going now.
Okay, I appreciate that it would be city staff, even though this does say the committee, it would be, what was the language? The committee will be responsible for overseeing. So it's basically city staff, and hopefully those lists are, have been updated and are, are better than they were twenty-five years ago. We've got tree grates downtown that of course are pushed up and sidewalk even. So hopefully the, the lists are more appropriate now. Along the same line, again, with species selection, there's also the issue, and I don't know if the city is really seriously or realistically addressed, the damage that some of the trees do to awnings downtown. And again, that's another, another issue, and I don't know how much the city is up to date on that, or actually has acknowledged the damage that some of the trees can do to the awnings. Can you speak to that?
Yes. So when it comes to issues created by trees that are in either the public and semi-public right-of-way, there's kind of two things. One, the city does have a program in place for like hazardous sidewalks that helps offset some of the costs for people that go through that program. The application's right on our city website. If you've got a sidewalk that's uplifted, and the tree is causing that issue, we've got a place to be able to help people out with that type of cost. The other thing is, our municipal code, with the way everything's written, puts the city ownership, while it's a city tree and a city public right-of-way, the maintenance of those trees are all put on the adjacent property owners. So if you've got a property owner downtown, and we don't charge a fee to be able to manage all the trees in the city, we could look to do that. But if you've got a property owner downtown who has an adjacent tree causing damage to their awning, they are actually the ones that can have that tree trimmed and everything, and make sure that they're able to alleviate those issues that they're having. We just have a pretty straightforward tree trimming and pruning, removal-type permit process that they have to go through and get a certified arborist to do that work.
So that would be at the adjacent property owner's expense?
Yes.
And we have a program to assist with that, as we do with the roots, or no?
No, we've not established a program for that. We don't have a funding source to help offset some of those costs.
Hmm. Thank you.
Okay. Joel, and then Victoria?
So I wanted to respond a little bit to the forty percent canopy closure. The benefits of trees in an urban environment are, are very attractive, you know, especially in the summertime when it's hot. And to have it, to be proactive in that is, gains all those benefits, plus there's, there's benefits, other benefits as well.
Hey, Joel, I don't want to interrupt you, but this kind of sounds like more like discussion. We want to get through questions real quick.
Oh, okay.
Can you pose a question? And then you can, you can give us some more discussion, or if you got a question in there?
I, I got, I want to add on to Rob's discussion.
Very good. Sorry. Just, I'm trying to bring you full circle, so everybody gets a chance to have a question.
You're good.
Uh, go ahead, Victoria.
On page twenty-three, it talks about monitoring tree health and tracking invasive species. I was a little, I don't know, that may be a new addition. It may just be a carryover. But I guess my overall question is, when I was looking through the packet, I was looking for increased fees to, like you said, the Walmart parking, you know, to people, developers and such, who are going to, I, I was looking for, are we going to be charging a much higher fee to people who are developing? So I didn't see the cost in the urban forest management plan. And I don't, can you speak to that?
Sure. So the Urban Forest Management Plan, again, is the guideline for the Urban Tree Advisory Committee. The Urban Tree Advisory Committee is a council advisory committee. Basically, the plan helps framework what they are going to be working on in order to make recommendations to council. Sometimes, our current iteration of it hasn't made a lot of those types of recommendations. But sometimes, there would be a recommendation of increasing a fee for something if it means we're able to accomplish something better on the urban tree side. And those decisions, when it comes to increasing fees or anything, are solely up to council's discretion. This just helps identify that, yeah, there may be needs, as they start going through things, to look at fee structures. Similar to Counselor Pell's thing, in other jurisdictions, I mean, nobody likes things under utility fees or anything like that, but other jurisdictions do have tree fees on their water bills, so that they're able to go in and help these private property owners with a lot more of this type of work, to be able to address some of the issues, like the downtown trees and things like that. So it's not that they are going to be setting fees or anything like that. It just structures the recommendations, that they may be looking at those types of things as a part of what the committee does.
Perfect. Any further questions? Uh, Rick, and then Indra?
So, as technology changes, solar panels will probably become more and more common and be located in commercial areas, as well as private property. Are there already protections within our ordinance, when we look at these trees in the, in the forty percent canopy, that those areas that could be considered will be protected for solar?
I don't think our current codes address anything about future solar panels going up or anything else like that. Again, this isn't something that's been adopted as part of like a comprehensive plan for the city. It's a guiding document for the committee. But, you know, that is kind of one of these weird things. The two green sides there are gonna fight it out eventually about, you know, not getting shade over their solar panels, but still needing the trees. It's just nothing that I think we have addressed in any of our current codes.
And is there, in the permitting process, we're putting the tree in, is there opportunity for the impacted property, which could be private or commercial, to respond to the type of tree that's going in?
Yes. We do a lot of work with our property owners and our semi-public and public right-of-ways, any of the adjacent property owners, when we are removing those trees. A lot of times, one of the first things we ask is, here's our list, and here's what we have available. What tree would you guys like? Some folks like the tree that they had. Sometimes, that tree can't go back, because it was the wrong species planted twenty years ago. And other times, we're able to just replant the same species. Another thing we run into quite frequently in our semi-public right-of-ways is older developments that were built fifteen, twenty years ago. Sometimes, things were missed on either a landscape plan, or it wasn't even a requirement at the time. And so some of the trees that get removed can't be replanted, because they're too close to our current water infrastructure and could cause other future damage down the road. So we end up shifting things around.
Okay. Thank you.
Indra, do you have a question?
I guess I just want to clarify. So I see there's minor staffing resources for the plan, and the plan is great. But to follow up with Counselor Marshall's question, coordinating with private landowners, encouraging, and the trees themselves, do they cost money? Where are they coming from? And we, are you saying we implement the plan, we like the plan, and then, but then later, at a later time, we'll have to come up with a fee structure for this whole plan?
So, you know, this is a plan to help guide the decisions and what the tree committee would be working on to make advisory recommendations to council. It's not a plan that's being adopted that is going to fundamentally change any of our current processes in the city. Any of those types of changes would be at council direction, once they make those recommendations. This just helps streamline and focus in the committee's work. And then as far as where tree costs come from, usually, depending on where it's at, it's either out of the Parks and Recreation Budget, through our Tree City Fund, or sometimes it's out of Public Works, through their street funds. And the other times, it's out of our LB codes. Right now, we've got an LB code from old tree deposits that never got re, or they never came back for, that we've been using for like a lot of our downtown tree plantings.
Eric?
I just want to make sure, is consideration taken for the, I didn't see anything really in there as far as the watering schedule and all that, for this aggressive plan? If, if they, if these trees get, either it's an improper species that gets put in place or whatnot. or whatnot, didn't see anything in there in terms of if, if the tree falls or anything like that, if it's improperly planted or grown or what have you. The city's held liable for that. So I'm just worried about that kind of danger that the city's being put into with this aggressive coverage.
So as far as liabilities from tree falling, it's kind of minimal. Once the city puts in a tree, yeah, we have management, but the owner is the adjacent property owner. Our trees fall in the city quite often during any of our storms. Not every one of those trees has people coming down to City Hall to threaten lawsuits. We do live in a weird world. Well, people will try to sue for pretty much anything nowadays. Even in our parks locations, if a tree falls on a neighbor's fence and things like that, it's not necessarily something that the city's liable for because in order to create that liability, you tend to have to have some form of negligence.
I guess what I'm asking specifically is, are these things taken into consideration as far as the arborist or whomever picks that certain type of species of plant or tree? Is that taken into consideration? And I know there's a lot of other things in here that are, that are listed, but I didn't see that in specific listing.
So again, the plan doesn't change any of the fundamental stuff that we currently do on a day-to-day in the city. On the city side of things, when we're working with arborists to replant areas, when we're replanting areas as a part of like a tree canopy or a memorial tree program, it all comes down to kind of this universal arboretum idea of right tree, right place. We make sure to review the site locations. We make sure to look for potential targets either now or in the future. Make sure to look for like power lines, irrigation lines, any sort of infrastructure that could be damaged. And we make our tree selection based on what is going to create the most minimal amount of that possibility happening.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, I'm just going to add one question here, just for clarification's sake, because I kind of went through all the questions here. So this urban forest management plan, with the council adopting this tonight, it is specifically for the urban tree advisory committee to help them make decisions. As a committee, they're made up of contributing citizens from this, from the community, and they would give recommendations to who?
They would give recommendations to the city council.
So this isn't changing any of our city codes. This is basically just a guideline map for that committee that is comprised of citizens within our community?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. At this point, we'll open up to public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wants to stand and discuss this current topic that we're talking about? Come on up, state your name, and hopefully your comments are in regards to the urban forest management plan.
Uh, bum wire, Lifetime Grants Pass. Well, you better get some good tree people. That's all I can say. You blow a lot of smoke, I can tell you that. All these trees, you know, they're beautiful trees. But up in my subdivision up there above Albertson's, they're not very tall. Nobody wants to water them because they're responsible for them. Half of them are dying. And then the other thing is, in the subdivisions, they're, they're at the right height when they plant them. And then when they bloom out, they're a sight distance problem. I worked for the Public Works Department for a ton of years for the county. And sight distance was a big thing. And it is today. The county sucks at what they're doing here. And I'm telling you, sight distance in the city in the subdivisions sucks here in the subdivisions. Crashes, our crashes are big time. It's because you can't see. You pull out of Allen Creek and Wes Harbeck, the, when there's leaves on those trees to your left, you can't see. Well, they're going to do Allen Creek, that, all that new section of Allen Creek, they're going to put that island right down that center. They're going to put trees right down the middle of that thing and bushes. It's going to make it a sight distance problem, just like Willow Lane was. You guys need to talk to me. I talked to the whoever at the Public Works Department about this a year ago. And something needs to be done because trees are a sight distance problem in this town, big time. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? All right, seeing none.
I have a question. Do you mind?
This is for comments.
Yes, comments.
Sure, go ahead. State your name and give us a comment in regards to this urban tree.
Okay. I'm April Harris. Do I have to hit a timer? Oh, good. Okay. So my concern is that trees will get planted and then years later, people want to, want to do solar or wildfire comes up, you know, insurance is saying, okay, you've got X amount of trees on your property. We need to take them out. I, I live out in Merlin. We have lots of trees. We've had to take them all out. So I guess that's my concern is that it's nice to see it, but in order to offset pow, power, if we wanted, if we wanted to go solar, we have to take 30 trees out to get 65% on solar. So I guess that's my concern is that, that as well as, you know, wet leaves on the sidewalks that aren't getting picked up and someone's slipping on it, I mean, that's easily to do too. So I guess, I guess that's my concern is that we don't know what the future lays, two years, three years down the line. I mean, we're having to take trees out on our property because of fire hazard. So, and we're, we're going solar, even though we don't want to admit it, it's going solar. So I guess my concern is having all these trees done to have to take them out a few years later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Come on up, state your name first and give us your comments in regards to the urban forest management plan.
Hi, Ryan Christian, Grants Pass residence. I, I just want a nice place for my kids to grow up in and, and to have just, just something good for them. So there's a saying, the best time to plant trees was 40 years ago. The next best time is today. So that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Joel, I would like you to finish your, your statement earlier. You were actually adding some tidbits on why they were looking at the 40%. And sorry to cut you off, I was just trying to make sure everybody got questions in there, but it's your time now, buddy.
I'll just give you my personal opinion. Of course, I've dealt with trees as my career my whole life, so I'm very familiar with them. The type, the type and species of tree is, is very important. I know we planted three trees around our place. We got solar. It functions very well. One of the things that I'm going to bring up with the tree committee next month is the, the pruning downtown and how that works and doesn't work. And landowner has the option of not planting a tree if they don't want one. This does not say that you have to plant a tree. I know out at my family tree farm, we have far too many trees also. So every day we go out there and we cut trees. And are, just because they, it's not healthy. So, and it's not healthy right next to your house. I mean, that, that would be dumb. So don't do that. On the other hand, trees do have a place. They're an infrastructure. They're a lively part of what makes Grants Pass attractive, cooler in the summer. The redwood, a lot of our trees, our streets are named after trees. Why is that? Redwood Avenue, Oak, I live on Oak Street, Pine Street. So it's part of our heritage and we just need to be smart about it and not do it blindly.
Perfect. Thanks, Joel. Any other further discussion? Indra?
I would just say, I mean, trees in the city around are, are really nice. And as Joel mentioned, landowners don't have to do it, but those that want to and take care of them will. I will also say that we do have some openings on the urban tree advisory committee. So if you're really interested and in the city, I would love for you to apply to that. And it's my understanding that this is just a plan that if there is any action with the trees, that it would come to the council and the council would approve or not the plan. So I think it's a nice plan and, and good goals to set.
Thank you. Any further discussion in regards to the urban forest management plan? Go ahead, Victoria.
I don't thi, I think it's a really beautifully written plan that has a vision for our beautiful city that we, and we want the trees planted in the city and we want it to look beautiful. I, and this plan is for the trees. It's the urban tree advisory committee. So it's understandable. But I would, I would love to see a little bit more about the, the people that are planting the trees and a little bit of thought for the businesses. It's, it's not to say that I'm, I'm against this plan, but that, that would be nice to see, just a little bit about, well, we'd also like to make sure that it's not an undue burden on, you know, the people, just things like that. Or I, I would have liked to have seen a little bit more about businesses and homeowners and, and what they can expect and what their responsibilities or rights were.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Kathleen?
I move to adopt the urban forest management plan as a guiding document for the urban tree advisory committee.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to adopt the resolution. Joel's the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go for a vote. Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next on our agenda is a resolution approving commercial activity in Riverside Park for the medicine show revival. It looks like Josh is going to present for us again. Thank you.
Good evening again. Josh Hopkins, Park Superintendent. So we had this item on March 5th. I'm going to kind of breeze through a few of these slides because they're definitely duplicate, and then I'll touch base on some of the other ones. So this is for looking at a request to approve a commercial activity for the medicine show revival in Riverside Park. It's relationship council goal of encouraging economic opportunities. Elated Family LLC in partnership with Rogue Valley Independent Educator is helping put this on their nonprofit group. Additionally, they're putting it on with the folks that do the medicine show. And they're looking at it as a big community educational and networking event. They submitted a commercial activity permit. The dates are for, on April 20th from 9:00 to 9:00 p.m. Our municipal code requires these large-scale things to come to council. And, you know, with approval of this, they'd be able to have this event. So on the March 5th, 2025, council requested more information regarding the planned activities and vendor information. Council did ask a few questions. I went ahead and got the answers for. One was about whether or not there'd be selling cannabis products. And the other was about whether it would impact an Easter egg hunt at Riverside Park. The event organizers had already reported that they had no intention of selling any sort of cannabis-related product and they would not sell CBD products. Additionally, the organization that used to hold Easter egg hunts in Riverside Park hasn't done so in many years. So there is no Easter egg hunt that this impacts. The organization did submit a letter to further detail some of their stuff, which was supplied to council in their packet. And Banjo, one of the organizers is here, if you guys have specific information and want some questions of him. Overall, the event does estimate 150 attendees. It's going to be family-friendly. Part of more what they detailed in the letter is that there is going to be a lot of arts and crafts events, shareable musical instrument area. I think they called it a musical petting zoo, but it's where kids can go share musical instruments. Birdhouse building, leather crafts and wire crafts. Additionally, they're going to have a lot of different types of inspirational speakers doing more TED Talk style municipal medicine lectures, as well as fitness demonstration, acupuncture, eastern medicine demonstration, craft vendors, foods and snacks. They do plan on having live entertainment. They've already gotten their loudspeaker permit. We do that type of stuff for all these events as well. It's going to be a mixture of musical acts, sketch comedy, and other types of demonstrations as well on the stage that they're going to bring. Revenue source, we do charge a fee for these types of things. For this event, it'd be $355.50. And then the call to action is tonight. Alternatives are council could allow the commercial activity in Riverside Park or not allow this activity. There is a potential motion there. Questions?
Thank you very much, Josh. Any questions for Josh? Or it sounds like the applicant is here too. Rick?
Josh, on page 31 of our packet, it indicates the medicine show revival is a seven-day celebration. But you indicated on the slide up here, it's for one day only.
Yes. So overall, it is over the course of seven days with it cumulating on the 20th at Riverside Park. So the only time the event is taking place in Riverside Park is on the 20th, but it's an event that's popped up across the community for seven days.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Josh. Now we'll open up for public comment. If anybody wants to weigh, from the public want to weigh in on this resolution, step forth now.
Would you like to hear it?
Yep, go right ahead. State your name first.
Timothy Youngblood, AKA Banjo Like the Dog Youngblood. Pleasure to be here, y'all. I, I did want to raise awareness that there wouldn't be acupuncture actually happening at the park. Although the acupuncturist, Leah Knight, who's the event organizer, will be introducing some sort of education regarding the, the eastern-style medicine that she does. As well as, you know, just small detail, we call it a TED tile, a TED Talks-style lecture. We call it Med Talks. It doesn't necessarily have to do with medicine, you know, western medicine like we, we would anticipate. But what the medicine show revival, revival is promoting, that the medicine that we all need today is community and the pursuit of passion. And so this is an opportunity to really engage the community as much as possible with what drives them and bring them out and have them introduce what they do for the love of it with people that might find interest in it as well. Yeah. There's a lot more to say. I'm, I'm sure I'm going to run up time. But yeah, if anybody has any questions, I could give you phone numbers. I've got plenty of information here regarding vendors, workshops that would be hosted so far, and plenty more people are going to be signing up. And I'd like to reaffirm that, yeah, I, I get that Easter fell on April 20th. This, you know, it is a family-friendly event and I'm thrilled to be, you know, a part of it.
All right. Thank you very much, Banjo.
Thank you.
Oh, we're, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to kind of go against protocol here. If you want to stay there, it sounds like we've got a couple of questions for you, if that's okay.
Yeah, happy to, happy to.
Um, Victoria and then Rick, and then Kathleen?
It sounds like a really interesting event. And I wonder, could you just tell us, have you done it before? And obviously you haven't done it in Riverside Park before, but just describe for us a little bit about what your event was like before.
Thank you. I'm, I, this is actually, this is big. This is big for the medicine show revival. And in fact, I've been, I've been gearing up towards this since 2011. And I'm thrilled that Grants Pass is, is our foothold for launching in this sort of capacity. Before this, I've been, I've been in entertainment and since, you know, for the last 18 years and even more so before then. But before this gearing up towards this, this has been the Youngblood Family Medicine Show. It's been my, my wife and my two kids participating in it. And we, we have mobile stages that we would travel to rural areas and sometimes cities and put up these, these mobile stages and put on, you know, variety shows and so on and so forth. Yeah. But, yeah, thanks for asking.
Uh, Rick?
Thank you for applying. You have said you have a list of the vendors that would be at the show. Are you able to indicate the type of vendors?
Yeah. So we've got True Juice. If you're familiar, True Juice is on D Street. They're, the Chris Walker there is going to be not only offering fresh squeezed juice There, uh, uh, the Chris Walker there is gonna be not only offering uh, uh, fresh squeezed juice, but he's also gonna be offering uh, fitness instruction. Uh, I'd I'd like to preface this by by saying, we we've charged a vendor fee of $40, but we've we've significantly discounted that to anybody that's willing to bring an educational aspect of it. And and forgive me for for deviating just a little bit. Our mission statement is empower, educate and entertain. Right? And so uh, so it's $40 for somebody that wants to vent. It's $25 for somebody that's gonna be educating. So uh, e- each of these people, uh, everybody here, uh, that's signed up as vendors is also gonna be educating to some degree. We've got Charlie and Adrian from Down and Williams. They've got an arts and crafts booth. Um, and so they will be selling some of the stuff that they've created, but also they're teaching leather crafting. Uh, we've got Sublime Aura Photography, which she does a surface where you can, you can put your hand on a um, uh, a pad and electronically it shows you what your aura is doing. Uh, it's very interesting, but this is also something that comes as a, as a, uh, almost a medicinal, you know, you could say, way of of analyzing what your body is going through, what your energetic field is going through. Uh, we've got Ms. B who's offering sourdough starters and with that is a workshop of teaching people how to care for their sourdoughs. Um, we've got uh, Michelle Windus, who's selling acrylic acrylic paintings and and uh, prints of paintings. And it also, uh, it also indicates that she's, she's teaching a guided painting class. Um, we've got Andy Baldwin, who's offering massage, but he's also a fantastic musician that's gonna be participating in the instrument petting zoo that's gonna be there. Um, we've got Kelsey Burns, who's offering holistic hydration station and she's selling, uh, lemonade. And then we've got a Baby Bunny Petting Zoo, who who's being brought to the, uh, by the Connected Teens Teen School. Um, and they're gonna be uh, uh, selling bunny poop, uh, and teaching about the the benefits of it for gardening. Um, and this is just uh, some of the people we have lined up. There's a much larger list, you know. This is the list of vendors. There's a much larger list of workshops, you know, and this is.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Um, Kathleen?
Yeah, I was wondering, are you gonna actually have a Easter egg hunt?
We are, yeah. Looking forward to it. Yeah, you know, when I was, I, I like oranges, you know. We might have some oranges in there.
All right. Thank you very much, Banjo. Any further questions? All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, at this point, I'm gonna bring it back to discussion with the council and/or action. Uh, Indra?
I think it sounds amazing and every organization has their inaugural year and so I hope the councillors will approve this as your first year. And uh, I think you should uh, hit up Councillor Pell too for a workshop. He's into all of that. Um, it just sounds amazing to me.
Thanks, Indra. Any further discussion? Uh, Rob and then Victoria?
Just briefly regarding uh, the Easter eggs, um, I uh, checked on it. I was reminded that uh, Easter egg hunt last couple of years has been over at Redwood Park, uh, run by Mark Kelsey. So I'm not sure of the size of the one that's gonna be uh, with the Medicine Show, but there is a good-sized Easter egg hunt over at Redwood Park.
Thanks, Rob. Uh, Victoria?
Oh, I just wanted to move to approve the resolution allowing commercial activity in Riverside Park for the Medicine Show Revival Event, April 20th, 2025.
All right, we have a motion on the table with a second from Kathleen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll go into a vote. Uh, Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Unanimously passed. Uh, thank you for that and good luck to you, Banjo. Um, next we are gonna move on to appointments. Um, we have appointments for Budget Committee. We had a Budget Committee member actually leave town. So uh, there's a yellow sheet in front of you. Uh, if you would mark your preference and pass it down. Sign the bottom, please. Okay, so preference sheets were handed in, um, and we're tallied up. So we have um, four councillors that would prefer Tom Bradbeer and then we have three councillors that would prefer Heidi Napier. So I bring it back to the council for looking for um, action or discussion. Rob?
Make a motion to appoint Tom Bradbeer to Budget Committee.
Thank you, Rob. We have a motion to appoint Tom Bradbeer to the Budget Committee with a second from Rick. Any further discussion? All right, with that, we'll go into a vote. Uh, Victoria?
No.
Um, Indra?
Yes.
Uh, Eric?
No.
Uh, Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Nope.
Um, Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
All right, so we have uh, four yeses and three nos, so uh, motion carries for, to appoint Tom Bradbeer to Budget Committee. All right, second appointments in our schedule here is for Tourism Advisory Committee. We have three members that we need to appoint to the Tourism Advisory Committee. So you have a preference sheet in front of you. Looks like there's a few words at the bottom of recommendations, so I will give you guys a second to vote, digest that. Please sign the bottom and pass it down. Okay, so we have three um, open spots on the Tourism Advisory Committee. So I would be looking for, I'm gonna read the preferences a second, but we would be looking for action, appointing one person at a time. Um, so at this point, we have seven preferences for Sue Densmore. We have two preferences for Brittany Dole. We have, we have seven preferences for Kenneth Harper and we have five preferences for Vivian Williamson Scrubelli. Apologize if I screwed that one up. Um, so I'll bring it back to council, looking for um, a nomination, one at a time. Three positions open. Or discussion. Sorry about that. Yeah, just pass them back. Here, just take one and pass it.
No, it's, we've got it in the packet, so.
I move to nominate.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I move to nominate Sue Densmore to the Tourism Advisory Committee.
Okay, we have a nomination for uh, Sue Densmore to Tourism Advisory Committee for one position with a second from Kathleen. Any further discussion? Okay, uh, we'll be voting to appoint Sue Densmore, um, to Tourism Advisory Committee. Uh, Victoria?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
All right, unanimously passed. I would be looking for action from the council to nominate a second person to the Tourism Advisory Committee. Uh, Rick?
I'd like to nominate Kevin Harper to the Tourism Advisory Committee.
Okay, we have a motion to nominate Kevin Harper to the Tourism Advisory Committee. Looking for a second. Uh, Rob? Thank you. We have a first and a second, um, to nominate Kevin Harper to the Tourism Advisory Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll go into a vote. Rob?
Yes.
Uh, Rick, oh, I'm sorry, Joel?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
All right, unanimously passed. Uh, we have one more position open on the Tourism Advisory Committee, so I'd look into the council for a nominee. Joel?
So I nominate Vivian Williamson Shitabelli.
All right, we have a nomination for Vivian. Have a second. Rob, a second. So we have a first and a second to nominate Vivian to the Tourism Advisory Committee, which will be a third position to fill. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go into a vote. Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Um, Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
Unanimously passed. So we have three nominees, uh, passed to the Tourism Advisory Committee. Sue Densmore, Kevin Harper, Hopper, sorry, uh, Vivian Williamson Scrubelli, I think. Thank you. Um, at this point, the last appointment we have is for Urban Tree Advisory Committee. We would be looking for three open positions in the Urban Tree Advisory Committee. You have a green sheet in front of you. Please make your preferences, sign the bottom and pass it along. All right, preferences are unanimous to appoint the three applicants for the three open positions. So I'd be looking for council, um, and since the preferences were unanimous, you could make a, uh, one motion to appoint all three. Go ahead, Joel.
So I make a motion to approve Monique Boudo, Teresa Jumps and Amy Wells as committee members on the Urban Tree Advisory Committee.
Uh, there's a motion on the table. Looking for a second. Kathleen, thank you. Um, further discussion? All right, you will be voting, uh, to appoint the three nominees to the three open positions for the Urban Tree Advisory Committee. Victoria?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Rick?
Yes.
Um, uh, Rob?
Yeah.
Thank you guys very much. The unanimous. So we have appointed, uh, three committee members to the three open positions for Urban Tree Advisory Committee. All right. The anticipation will end. We are now gonna open up to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on items not related to a public hearing or council, can't council action item for the council. The intent is to provide information that is pertinent to the city's jurisdiction. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the council as one body, not individuals. This meeting will proceed in an effective and courteous manner. Citizens and council members will be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free from slander, threats and other personal attacks. Signs or placards, outbursts of applause, campaigning for public office or other disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. If you have any, if you have a question regarding any government-provided service or a current city policy, please contact the City Manager's Office and attempt to resolve that matter. I have a number of blue cards and I appreciate you guys, um, putting them in ahead of time. Um, we have one person that's online, so I'm gonna give him, um, the space up front. And so Mike Pelfrey, go right ahead. You have two minutes. And please restate your name as you start. Are you there, Mike?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, Mike, it's, go right ahead.
Yep, this is Mike Pelfrey, city resident. And just wanting to, uh, ask our city leaders, at what point will we be, um, perhaps moving forward with trying to beautify our city? Because I don't know about you, but when I drive around Grants Pass, I see a lot of rubbish that's been left over by some of our travelers. Um, I also see gro- uh, grocery carts strung out all over this city and, you know, that is just not a good look, uh, if we're a city that's trying to attract tourists to come in and spend money with us. Um, so I I'm hoping that the leaders of our city will maybe consider appointing someone to oversee the rebouutification of of Grants Pass. We deserve a beautiful city. We have a river. We have, you know, we have lots of things to offer visitors to come to visit. But when they drive down, um, and get off the interstate and the first thing that they see that welcomes them is a grocery cart that's been there for a week or two, you know, that's just not a good look for for our city. So, you know, I just hope that we could maybe stop and and think about, you know, exactly the direction that we would like to see Grants Pass go in. And in my opinion, we need to make Grants Pass beautiful again. And the only way we're gonna do that is we've gotta get proactive. So I hope you guys will get proactive and let's get our city back and let's get, uh, uh, let's be, let's let Grants Pass be something that we can all be proud of. That's all I have for you this evening. Thank you and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you very much, Mike. Uh, next up, Carrie Weldon. Please, uh, come to the podium. You have two minutes. Please state your name before you start. Thank you.
My name is Carrie Weldon. I'm a county resident. Drug dealers in this county need consequences. My son was walking the walk. He had over 60 days clean, enrolled in ADAPT and had a clean UA two days before he died. A known drug dealer reached out to him, tempted him at a vulnerable time and drove from Grants Pass to Merlin to sell him $40 worth of fentanyl. This dealer knew my son had clean time and not only sold to him, but allowed him to use alone, knowing the risks that could cause. This resulted in his death. We need to hold these dealers responsible, make a positive impact by making Josephine County an example that we will prosecute dealers. My son was walking the walk. Without the temptation of dealers on every corner with no consequences, he would still be here today. He wasn't just an addict. He was a son, a brother, an uncle and a father. He deserved his chance of sobriety. Dealers need consequences in this town.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Ruth Daley? Please state your name and you have two minutes.
Yes, Ruth Daley, Grants Pass. Hello, everybody. I'm here to request that Robert Marbut not be asked to provide consultation on homelessness in Grants Pass as was requested by council at Monday's workshop. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition and the National Alliance to End Homelessness, Dr. Marbut continues to make false claims on homelessness. Including, Marbut ignores the structural issues that lead to homelessness, choosing instead to blame it on homeless people and homeless programs. Marbut's approach forces people into large shelters with strict behavioral requirements that may not be. that may not be appropriate for their needs and provide no path to housing. Marbut mischaracterizes Housing First as Housing Only. He says that it does not include services and is one-size-fits-all. Nothing could be farther from the truth. Marbut's model is an outdated one that was practiced during the early years of homelessness, but it was abandoned by communities in past Republican and Democratic administrations because it was ineffective and caused homelessness to increase. Marbut claims that his model is responsible for reducing homelessness, but he fails to support this claim with solid data. Marbut points to San Antonio's Haven for Hope as an example of his approach of co-locating services and behavior modifications, but there's little evidence that this approach was successful. Marbut has a practice of repeating claims that are not backed by evidence. If you want to have a consult or a consultant, please consider others also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Brian Weldon? Come on up, state your name, and you've got two minutes.
Brian Weldon, county. I disagree with that 100%. A lot of you were Saturday's event, listening to Dr. Robert Marbut. He knows a great deal. He's been watching Grants Pass and our lawsuit and all the problems we've been going through for quite a while. I'm a member of Park Watch. Our team watches our parks every week, and sometimes multiple times a week. We see drug activity in every bathroom in the parks, and now they seem to be living in RVs and suspicious-looking vehicles with no plates, broken windshields, a number of violations that doesn't seem to go unnoticed at all. Two weeks ago, at our last Sunday meeting, I go through Baker Park, Morrison Park, Riverside Park, and Tussing, and there's a big 40-foot-long white van down at Morrison Park, and there must have been half a dozen junkies all buying their meth from him. And then he drives away, and 10 minutes later, he's at Baker Park with more people waiting at the door to buy their drugs from him. So then we have our meeting for an hour. We clean up all Riverside down at the river, and I'm going home down the Lower River Road, and here he is at Lathrow Park. And within 15 minutes, there's three or four cars pulling up, buying drugs from him. I took a picture of him, and they all throw rocks at me. I called the sheriff. Nobody came for four hours. We need law enforcement in this town to deal with drug activities. We have dealers that we have all spotted for years now that just seem to go unnoticed. The drugs coming into this town, the fentanyl, we're going to wait until children, and doctor was talking about this, children touch a table, put their hand in their mouth, and then die of fentanyl. Thank you very much.
Melissa Hughes? Come on up, state your name, and you've got two minutes. Thank you.
Hello, council, and thank you for giving me this time. My name is Melissa Hughes. I'm a citizen of Grants Pass. I had a real clever little statement about how I was a first-time speaker, but I ruined that for myself earlier. I'm here to express concern regarding the proposal to potentially partner with Robert Marbut. I've already expressed concerns via email, highlighting why his positions and policies on the unhoused community could be detrimental to our city, as in they've been proven ineffectual, lacking in evidence, and unsustainable. But for this evening, I think it's important to bring attention to how financially devastating he could be for the city of Grants Pass. According to the Sarasota Herald Tribune, a 2013 contract with Mr. Marbut was going to start at $40,000 for only four months of his services. An update seven or so months later stated that his services were not complete and his contract needed to be extended, making the total $80,000. The ultimate recommendation was to open a large shelter that cost the city close to $9 million. In Daytona in 2014, Marbut's solution was for a $4 million complex with a $2.3 million annual operating budget. And finally, in Anchorage, Alaska, they hired him to consult. In 2020, they hired him to consult for $6,700 a month plus any additional travel fees. I must state that these three locations I've mentioned, homelessness did not decline in any of them. We simply can't entertain that kind of money for services that undoubtedly don't work. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Shown Nelson, step on up, restate your name, and you've got two minutes.
Shoney Nelson, Grants Pass, Oregon. You just heard someone right here that lost her son, and it's really hard for me to talk about right now. How big of a fence do I have to build? What am I talking about? I just built a huge-ass fence that I haven't completely finished. I've got to finish the gate. Someone saw me back here, came right up to my house. He saw my fence. I'm over by the Devil's Side area. Why is it such a big deal to me? It's such a big deal to me because maybe you guys don't think about the fact that all it takes is a piece of foil floating in the air with fentanyl on it to kill a child. All right? My son's four years old. I go to the Park Watch to clean up so other kids can enjoy the parks, so that my kids can enjoy the parks. Well, we go there and we do it. You can ask these guys that are at Park Watch with me. We're at the gazebo at Riverside Park. I'm watching my kid. I swear to God, I'm a good dad, but I want to clean things up. My son goes out, I don't know where the hell he got it, but he gets a used toothbrush, and he comes back, and it's one of my Park Watch people that's got to save my kid from someone else's toothbrush. Thank God it was not foil laced with fentanyl. And now, right, we take, and I think it's really interesting, that nonprofits are giving Narcan left and right to drug users. I get it, all right, but those same ones, those drug users, are throwing it away. I'm finding it going out to parents actively, right, with my kids, and saying, hey, do you know about Narcan? Do you know about fentanyl? They go, no, I don't really know shit. And the interesting thing about that is I think it's a really screwed-up society, really, that we're going to sit there and give Narcan away free, all right, to people that they want to give their life away in the first place. But we're not going to educate parents and children about the same damn thing. Okay? I think that's a huge issue right there. I think we need to get some education going on. I think we need to get some safety going on, and I think we need to clean some shit up. Thank you very much. Have an amazing night.
Thanks, Shown. Hey, next time, let's keep the language above board there. We do have family members that do watch this. I appreciate your time. Dell?
Dell Aldridge, city of Grants Pass. I tell you what, 200 people a day die in this country from fentanyl. 200 people a day. We've got one right there. I've got my wife's brother. I've got my brother-in-law. They all died of overdoses. And we're not, we're not going to figure out how to fix it. We can only make a stab at it. Stab one is we've been cleaning the parks up. Riverside took two days clean. Morrison, Tessie, and Baker, all clean. We've got to go back. Weather's, you know, stirs things up. We're going to go back and do it again. We can even get to Gilbert. And Gilbert, you've got one problem. You need to put some signs up there stopping the car campers. They are where the drugs are coming. I got one in my parking lot yesterday that I filmed begging her to clean the trash up. She did, with Mike Pelfrey standing right next to her. And then four hours later, they left a pile of trash. And they're doing drugs in front of our restaurant, an ice cream shop. But Gilbert Creek and the parks around there, they all need to have signs. No overnight camping, like you did at Riverside. Riverside was very successful. Your neighbors were happy about it. No neighbor in the north end of town is happy about any of the parks. Any of the parks, because they stay there, and they pull out and park on the street. The same ones over and over. We know which ones are on drugs. We watched the van pull up to Tussie Park the other day, sell his stuff. Riverside, we saw that. And nothing's happening. We need to fix it. Grants Pass Safe Streets. Look it up. Join. We have 30 members now. I want to see 1,000 by the end of the summer. This is a park, a Park Watch runoff, but you don't need to be a member to be in it. Or you don't need to be...
You know what I mean. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time. Catherine? Hamilton? Step up, restate your name, and you've got two minutes. Thank you.
Catherine Hamilton, county. Every time I had this figured out, somebody would say something that I wanted to add to. So many people, we talk, we go to parks, we talk to people. We're online. We talk to people. We say, hey, if you're not happy, come to council meetings. We tell all kinds of people this. Oh, well, they don't listen anyway. They only do what they want. They don't care what goes on. They just want to make their money, which, yeah, okay, you guys make so much money. I would like to suggest, and I know you guys have more going on than just the two council meetings a month. I realize that. But to have a people-friendly meeting, put it like a month or so in advance. You've got something to say, come up and say it, but the number-one thing is you can't complain. You have to have suggestions. What can we do about this? What can we do about the homeless? What can we do about needing animal control? Have a real interaction. I don't know when, I don't know how, but people sure like to complain, as you all know. So if you have suggestions on how to fix something they want to complain about, we want, you know, you guys would like to hear it. Because I'm, you guys sit there, you come up with ideas, you come up with Vine Street for the Homeless. You come up with these, people complain. They're going to complain. Maybe somebody out there has an idea that will not come out, won't show up at 6 o'clock at night on a Wednesday, and then they forget, whatever. And if, I know everything else going on, the animal situation in this town, the animal shelter is at 90% over capacity. We need spanneuter, guys. Something needs to be done spanneuter-wise. This is, and I know humane society is really trying, but there are prices, and to get in, and it's crazy. I'm sure you've got a building somewhere you could throw at somebody.
Thanks for your time. All right, that concludes our public comment portion. At this time, we're moving on to the consent agenda. So as noted within our revised agenda, Item A has been taken off the consent agenda and moved to a March 31 workshop. And we have had a request for Item C resolution, authorizing the city manager to pursue water source protection grant funding on behalf of Rogue Drinking Water Partnership. We've had a request to star that item, which would actually bring us full circle to have some, a small presentation with some questions. So I will give it to, over to you, sir. Sorry. Almost jumped in there too fast. Sorry. No, you're good. So I just handed you a brochure which was generated by the Rogue Drinking Water Partnership and part of, which came out of the initial round of source water protection grants. And what I want to talk through and why it's so important, these grants are given out by the state of Oregon to drinking water providers, and it is strictly for the purpose of protecting drinking water. Drinking water, we can, we can treat it all day long, but that gets more expensive as our water becomes more contaminated. And so what the state has found is that by investing in keeping contaminants out of the drinking water, or out of our source water, we're able to more effectively make drinking water treatment and water safer for the community. So this grant is specifically to generate a, what's called a geographic response plan. We did a pilot test with a grant that was issued to the Medford Water Commission for the northern part of the Rogue River, or for the upper part of the Rogue River, primarily around the Medford Water Commission intake, on how to respond to a spill of contaminants within the Rogue River. And the geographic response plan identifies key locations where you're able to deploy various equipment to intercept a spill and prevent it from getting into drinking water intakes. So this grant, it's a pastor grant through Grants Pass to the, to the grant recipients. And we would work with them to develop the geographic response plan for both Grants Pass, Rogue River, and Gold Hills intakes to help protect drinking water on the Rogue River. And with that, I would love to answer any questions that you have. Thanks, Jason. I don't think we have any questions. Just kidding. Kathleen, Rick, and then Victoria. So Kathleen first?
Jason, how many spills have there been in the last 25 years?
Actual spills, there's only been one that was, and it was an indirect spill, and it was really the result of a fire, and I can't remember the name of the business, but it was where they stored all the gas and oil in Medford. And from the firefighting activities, all of that fuel, oil washed out of where the fire was ended up into a drainage and into the Rogue River. But there has not been a spill that I am aware of, of that magnitude within the Rogue River. Rick, and then Victoria?
Thank you, Jason. So this in here generates hydroelectric power, probably talking about Elk Creek Dam. But otherwise, do we have the ability to put any hydroelectric in the Rogue River?
No, probably not, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, not unless we change the governor. Victoria?
Hi, how much is the grant, and then what do we have to do?
So our role is pretty limited. We're going to provide input. We will likely consult with the, with the Rogue River Watershed Council. The, it costs the city nothing except a little bit of staff time. It is a $50,000 grant, and those are passed through. And out of that, we'll come up with concrete plans of where we are able to anchor equipment within the river to deflect potential spill around us, or other plans to respond. Kathleen, and then Indra?
$50,000 doesn't sound like very much when you're cleaning up such a big mess.
It actually is just to create the plan and how to respond to the mess. It's not, it's not designed to actually do any cleanup. It really is just to identify how we have to respond when that event occurs. It's more of a planning, they're planning grants.
And where's that grant coming from?
From the state of Oregon. Through, through the, it's through a drinking water revolving, revolving fund.
Not OHA?
Oregon Health Authority. Yes, it would be coming through Oregon Health Authority. Indra?
Within, has the plan, the plan hasn't been made. It's to make a plan. Is OHA going to be involved in that plan, or is it just local? And do they have any strings attached to what we do with the plan? Or will they come in at a later time because of our plan and tell us what we can and cannot do?
Yeah, they did not with Medford. So Medford already developed the pilot to this program. These grants are really designed to get local communities, and they primarily fund grants where communities are working with concert with each other. So us as an independent agency would be less likely to get this grant, but because we're working with Medford, Rogue River, Gold Hill, Medford Water Commission, and a larger pool, they're, they're more willing to fund those because we're protecting the drinking water for a region, not just for a single utility. Can they come in later and say, yes, this is what you have to do? OHA regulates your drinking water today. If they want to change the rules on how we provide drinking water or respond to drinking water issues, that is within their current purview. These, these dollars traditionally have not had strings. They are given out for communities to plan. And as long as your planning document is, you know, you submit it to them, but as long as it shows how you've protected the source water or enhanced protection of source water, they're fully on board. This would be the third source water protection grant that Grants Pass would receive. We received two previously, and two that the Medford Water Commission has done, all as part of this coordinated effort to protect the drinking water. The first one actually formed the Rogue Drinking Water Partnership, because previously, none of us as utilities have ever worked together. So it really was to build that foundation. We did some initial planning. We formed the document, helped to delineate where the, the source water protection areas were. The second one was an emergency response grant, where we actually installed a series of instruments from Grants Pass all the way to beyond Medford to be able to monitor source water quality in response to the fire in Phoenix. I just lost the name totally. Not the Oban Chain Fire, but the Almeida Fire. Totally lost that. And so they're really, really helpful grants for us on the drinking water side. I'm sorry to interrupt. Chief, would you mind asking them to just kind of move away from the door? Just a tidbit. Thank you. Go ahead, Jason, or, Indra, did he answer your question? Okay, any other questions? Go ahead, Indra.
Okay, any other questions? Go ahead, Indra.
Yeah.
We've already gotten two grants. Were they the same, $50,000 each?
Yep, they were both $50,000 grants.
To me, that seems like a lot of money, so this would just be for planning, and who in our city would be involved in that, and how much time does that take? And does that, that time then take away from city, other city issues going on that we're not here for?
That's a great question. It, it does take some staff time. Adam and his team will likely be the most likely people, Adam Smith, your water treatment plant superintendent, and his staff, because they are the ones that are most intimately involved with what's going on in the river. It'll involve a little bit of my staff time. I'll likely attend a couple of the meetings, but as far as doing the day-to-day planning, that would be Adam and his team. Also, we would probably involve fire, because part of this is determining how this equipment that would potentially be utilized in the future could be deployed. So fire would be instrumental of that with their swift water knowledge to be able to do that. But it does involve some time, for sure, from, from our staff. Not significant, but it, you know, it is a commitment.
Victoria?
It seems like, I was just thinking of the whole Rogue River, and you could just tell me if this is true. So you said we, we put some, from a previous grant that was like this, we got some information from the Alameda Fire, and then before that, you said that we, there's more collaboration, maybe thinking about the water, that, I mean, we're at the end of the line here, and then, and Medford, so did this foster just awareness and community and cooperation and communication with Medford, Gold Hill, you know, so, okay?
It did, and that was really huge, because when you look at Grants Pass, you're right, we are the end of the line, until pretty much you get to Gold Beach. And anything that happens upstream of us affects our drinking water, so it is really important. Not only did it bring the drinking water providers to the table, but also there's several smaller mobile home parks, and then all of the folks that are working in agriculture. It brought them to the table as well, because that is really our, our next primary pollutant is agriculture. And so by getting them to the table and having conversations with us, and then leveraging money from grants like this, and NRCS, I'm going to get that acronym wrong, but I think that's the other one that's doing a lot of work in agriculture and forest management, to help keep herbicides, pesticides, and those types of things out of the source water. So it really is an important, and it is part of our emergency planning efforts as well on the drinking water side.
Thank you, Jason. Any other questions? Kathleen?
Yeah.
So Jason, with you saying that the water treatment plant supervisor-director would have the bulk of the, maybe thinking-through process, was that going to put him on overload with building a new treatment water plant?
Um, I'm, that's always a concern. This, the lift is pretty low. It's a few meetings. There's some, then the engineers and all of the other team go off and they do some planning, and then you get back to doing, you know, you get together and meet and discuss. I don't think it puts him on overload, but it definitely adds to the workload, and he would, might have to redistribute a few things to his underlings, and just as I have to do to those people below me, where we shift things around to try and keep our workloads fairly balanced, so.
Indra?
Sorry, one more.
Yeah.
So this is an initial planning phase, so we're applying for that. Should we get it, there, there would be more planning phases, and we would, would we be assured of getting that grant money, or we have to apply and find out as well?
We'd have to apply. I will say, Southern Oregon and the Rogue Drinking Water Partnership has been incredibly successful. As I said, the city of Grants Pass has received two, and again, these are mostly just pass-through funds, and the Medford Water Commission, on behalf of the partnership, has also received two. So that's a total of $200,000 that's been invested in planning and executing source water protection activities for the drinking water providers on the Rogue River Basin. That's bringing money to our local residents, and we all go to Medford and drink water as well, if you go to a restaurant. So I mean, it does benefit the entire Rogue Valley.
Eric?
If by chance, well, if, if this gets awarded to us, and we decide that, and not all the $50,000 is spent, what happens to that money?
It just stays in the state coffers. Yep.
Any further questions? Victoria?
Yeah, something that you said made me have one more question, which is, and you can, you can just tell me if it's correct or not, that within any of these grants or any of this planning, has it made it more difficult for people with livestock to have their animals, or has it made people move their businesses or anything like that?
Yeah, no, it hasn't. We've really focused on, really trying just to respond to the immediate emergency as opposed to moving back out. There's other agencies that are doing that work with agriculture, like I said, the NRCS and some of the others, forestry. That really isn't our role. We want to really focus on our intake-to-intake, so. Thank you.
Joel, do you have a question? Okay. Perfect. Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Jason. Do you have, okay, go ahead.
So I manage the upper watersheds on the Rogue River, Butte Falls, where Medford gets 100% of their water supply with the Water Commission, and we manage the Water Commission's lands, and the upper Rogue River with the Rogue River Springs, and the Rogue River Council, Watershed Council does a great job. And, and this is an important issue, and you don't want it to become an urgent issue. So you want to manage it before it becomes urgent. And the land, it's just a good thing to address it as a watershed. You know, the Forest Service isn't going to manage the watershed up there, independent of your drinking water needs down here, so.
Thank you, Joel. So at this point, this was a consent agenda item. We did start, we got a presentation, we got questions and answers, period. So since it was a start item, I would be looking for a motion to either keep it on the consent agenda, or whatever you'd like to do. For simplicity's sakes, if we could get a motion to keep it on the consent agenda, I think that would be more efficient, but it's up to you guys. So I'd be looking for a call for action. Rob, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to keep this item on the consent agenda.
We got a second? Rick? All right, any further discussion on that? If not, let's do a quick vote to keep this on the consent agenda. Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Kathleen?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
No.
Indra?
No.
Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a four to three, so that will stay on the consent agenda. At this point, we will move forward with a consent agenda, and can we have that posted up? All right, consent agenda as published on the screen and published in our agenda packet for tonight. I would be looking for a motion from council to approve consent agenda. Rob?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it stands.
Thank you, sir. A second from Joel. Any further discussion? Seeing none, going to a vote. Rob?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
No.
Victoria?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes. Thank you very much. So the consent agenda passes. At this point, we will go on to matters for mayor, council, and staff. Bring it back to council. Rick?
Do we need a motion concerning Item 5A in the workshop on March 31st to move it to April 14th? Do we need a motion on that?
No, it was actually amended in the agenda with, with plenty of notice time, so it will stand as published in the agenda.
All right, thank you.
Any further matters for council? Indra?
I, just to clarify, did, it will stay at March 31st, or it will move to April 14th?
It will actually move to April 14th.
So that's a change from this.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, I actually don't have anything tonight, so I'll throw it back to count, staff. Anybody want to complain? Anybody want to, Jason has complaints?
Just one small item.
Go ahead, Jason.
In response to your direction, we will be coordinating with On Track and closing the parking lot north of A Street resting site on Monday, and working with the chief to notice the resters at the other site, and as soon as that's clear, we'll start the work on the other, other site. Should be in about a week and a half or so.
So just, just to clarify, that noticing will go out Monday?
Noticing, I believe, will start sooner than Monday.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
Coming into this conversation late, it depends, so.
Yes, sir.
We, we hope it will. We're talking about noticing people from 7th Street to go to the new property.
Correct.
We will try our best to have everybody noticed appropriately and move in a reasonable amount of time, so sometime in the next year.
So I guess let's back that up. When, when will the, the temporary site be?
Monday.
Change, so that, that's, we'll start Monday, and then noticing will be as, at your discretion, and we'll move them as quickly as we can.
Yeah, we're probably going to anticipate tomorrow, or maybe even the next day, so we can educate, share, make sure they know what, why they're being noticed.
Okay.
And then help the movement be a little bit smoother that way.
Excellent, and I'd appreciate coordination with notice on that, because we could probably get some help in moving. I know you have plenty of people that are in the community that want to, that want to help facilitate that, or anytime, the nonprofits I'm seeing. Perfect, thanks you, Jason. Anything else? Aaron, you have anything?
Oh, well, you know, we already moved on, and we, we gave the floor to the staff. You want me to take the floor back from the staff? Okay, I'm sorry, staff, I have to take the floor away from you. Just kidding. Go ahead, Indra, sorry.
Thank you. I, you moved so quickly. I missed my turn. I just wanted to address some of the speakers that spoke tonight. I agree that we've heard several comments over the last month or so about cleaning up our downtown area and all around, and making it more beautiful. So I hope, I don't know if that's something the Economic Development Department, or, you know, who in the city might be responsible for taking a lead in that, to make sure that we don't have carts out, or trash out, or we heard about downtown just being filthy, and, and so I, I would like the city to really look at, you know, how we can help clean that up. I, I feel the woman that got up with her son who died of fentanyl, I just agree. I see dealers too, and I don't understand why we know who they are, we see them, and we can't seem to stop it. And so I don't know if that's something, Aaron, we can work with the police chief to do more to get the drugs off the street, because I see it too, and I see those vans too, and I agree, there, there don't seem to be consequences for that. And you do see them selling right out there, and, and so maybe there's a hotline where someone can quickly come, or, you know, I don't know what else, video evidence, we see that. And so I'm at a loss as to why we can't do better with that as well. And I, I understand why residents are angry about that, and we, we need to do a better job. I, I know I met with, just happened to meet with the Holland Hole Funeral Director, and it's sad, the number of fentanyl deaths he sees, and I think the number, I think it's suppressed from the community. I don't think a lot of people in the community really know what's going on out there, and so I think education is so critical. I would like to see more efforts to educate, like someone mentioned, our children and our parents as to the dangers. So I would like to see some kind of educational, we're putting a lot of money and effort into the homeless, the people creating the problem, but then we're not putting any effort or money into our children and, and parents to stop the problem and help them. So I would like to see more education in our community, more real numbers of, really to educate people of what's really going on in our community, because, because a lot of people don't know, and it's to their detriment that they don't know. I think that I would not be opposed to having a town hall. I mean, this is fine where we talk and people have two minutes and listen, but I agree, maybe a more setting where there could be more discussion, a back and forth would be helpful, so I'm not opposed to that. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Indra. Victoria, do you want to weigh in now? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just took some notes when people were speaking as well, and, and I don't think she is here now, but Carrie Weldon, I just wanted to say that your son absolutely deserved his chance at sobriety, and it is a tragedy what happened in our, this was in our county. It's happening in our county and in our city. It's happening too much. People don't know the numbers. They really don't know the numbers, and we really must focus on treatment first. And so I'm so, I, I really appreciated the information for the people that brought forth speaking about a different avenue. I thank you very much for, for bringing that forward. But what we've been doing is housing first, and, and it was a marked change, and homelessness has grown, and I think a focus on treatment first is what must be done. And so that is something I think the, the city has been looking at, and I, I think it's worth a try, to keep an open mind and to see what this does. And I think that there are many, many nonprofits who are very willing to try, not, not just one, but a, a blanket of, of nonprofits who would be willing to go a different direction and try this, because the, we saw the consequences here tonight in a really real way, and so we must be, we can't do the same things that have been yielding these terrible results, so we have to try a different way. That's my opinion. Of course, you know, we're going to have, there's a lot more between here and there to get there, but I just wanted to, even though she's not here, just to, just heartfelt sorrow for Carrie Weldon and her son and her family and our community, and they're not the only ones, so there's so many of us who are suffering because of that, so. And I wanted to also thank, you know, Park Watch. It's amazing what they do, volunteering to clean up our parks, and so they're really very good assets for our community, so I wanted to thank them. And, and for Kathryn Hamilton, people-friendly meetings with solutions, I wrote down, which I thought was very nice. Kathryn, she isn't here, but I wanted to thank her. I thought that was a really nice suggestion, and that's what I want to say.
Mayor, I'd like the chief to have an opportunity to address some comments made with regards to drug dealers in our community.
Oh, yes. Chief, would you like to weigh in on that?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think there, I have a lot to share, in fact, and I don't think we have enough time, because the Grants Pass PD has done so much regarding drug use, drug support, and just overall, have this impact on this community for a long time. If I took you back to Ballot Measure 110, you might remember that the Grants Pass PD were the only ones issuing citations over and over and over again, because we knew if we didn't have data, we didn't have evidence-based data to show that this was a big mistake, how could we ever recriminalize possession or any... how could we ever recriminalize possessionary amounts of fentanyl, heroin, et cetera. I, in fact, testified in front of the legislature, and I think Grants Pass PD and Grants Pass in general had a huge impact on recriminalizing possession amounts of hard drugs. So I wanted to share that with you all. As a reminder, the Grants Pass Police Department are part of a robust Rogue Area Drug Enforcement Team, and we make major cases all the time. In fact, recently, there were some guns and some drugs recovered in a home, and the guys I know are working many, many cases right now that I can't share. Also, I have prioritized drug enforcement over the years. It's been one of my top priorities. In fact, we've dedicated a Grants Pass detective to the Drug Enforcement Agency for quite some time now, and he has led the charge with some major investigations that included sophisticated investigations, utilizing wiretaps, et cetera, to take down some major players in not only Southern Oregon, but in the United States and elsewhere. We've had a massive impact. It's a sad fact that at times, drugs are more expensive in Grants Pass because there's less of it, because of the work that we're doing. Is there ever going to be a time when there's no drugs in Grants Pass? Absolutely no. I spoke to a lady today, and that was her ask, how can we have a drug-free community? And I said, I hate to break this to you, it's just not going to happen. We have the I-5 corridor, we have major drug trafficking, sex trafficking, human trafficking, and we have a lot going on in our community. And with the limited resources we have, I am incredibly proud of the work that we do. Every single day, we're arresting people for possession control substance. But on top of that, we have, we are compassionate, and we believe in treating people with dignity and respect, and helping them on their journey of recovery. We've influenced deflection programs now over the last several months. Grants Pass PD are leading the charge. In fact, we're the only ones that have deflected, I think, 24-plus people in only a few months, and several have been successful. We also have a partnership with Adapt Integrated Health, where we dispatch recovery mentors to every single overdose in the city. So when our guys get there and secure the scene, we have a recovery mentor show up and help that individual on his or her journey to sobriety, if they choose to or not. And as a reminder, we added a second case manager from Options for Southern Oregon, who's embedded with the PD, so we can take this, these problems in our community head-on, because the uniform can be a barrier to people's recovery and support. So we tackle it from many different avenues, through our community response team, through Adapt, through Options for Southern Oregon, through myself, and through community. So I wanted to share that with you. We take it very serious. And I had time with the group out front tonight, and I invited a meeting in my office. I'm always available to share what we do, what we can do. And if we go wrong, we're big enough people to take that also, and move past that, move through it. So I just wanted to share that with you. There's a lot going on, and we have limited staffing. And I, as a reminder too, the Dastrop case was just closed out, and that was where a man abducted a 15-year-old girl just up the street, and he got 20 years. There's a lot going on in this community from those type of cases, drug use, et cetera, and we're doing everything we possibly can, and we need the community's support. It would take me a long time to explain why you can't just arrest somebody who's on video that looks like they're doing a hand-to-hand. And I don't want to give away all the secrets of the world right now, but it's, it is kind of, it makes a lot of sense when we can talk offline on those type of issues. It's just not that easy. And the fact of the matter is, everybody, to include criminals, have constitutional rights.
Thank you, Chief. I, for one, see the passion that comes out of you when you speak. So I am very trusting that you guys are tackling this to the best of your ability, and thank you for your comments. I had, Joel wanted to?
I'm fine. I got a comment, but it can be had another time.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else? Okay, I got one last thing. Strategic planning is Friday the 21st. I apologize, I've kind of double-booked. I'm going to Yuma to see my in-laws, because they're 87 years old, and this is one of the only times of the year my wife gets to see her parents. I just wanted to put it back to the council. If you guys wanted me to be involved in your strategic planning, if you guys would entertain postponing past Friday, if not, not a big deal. I'm just kind of throwing it out on our table. I have a scheduling conflict, and I'll actually be on the road to Arizona, and it's kind of hard for me to do that online. So just throwing it out as a question, if you guys would entertain postponing strategic planning, so I can be involved. I know I don't have as much influence as you guys in the strategic planning, but if you wanted me there involved, then I just ask you to entertain a postponement. If not, no big deal. Joel?
I think it would be valuable to have you involved.
Okay. Hey, Karen, do we have available dates that we could postpone, just so they have all the information?
Sure. We have April 9th, it's a Wednesday, or April 11th, which is a Friday.
Okay, and just to clarify, like, you guys as council, this is strategic planning for council, but if you wanted me to, I would love to be in attendance, and there, I just, I have a scheduling conflict, and that's all on me. I apologize. So if you want to further this conversation of postponing it, we have a couple alternative dates. If not, I'm not offended. Indra?
I would like to postpone it, because I would like to have you involved. I will be gone both of those dates.
So I have a couple other additional dates I looked up. Friday, April 18th, or Wednesday, April 23rd.
Either of those last two dates work for me.
So I will just kind of leave it to you guys. If you want to entertain a postponement to a later date, maybe somebody put a motion on, and then we can go forward. If not, then I will, last time I'm going to ask, and I'll end the conversation. Victoria?
Because the 18th is Good Friday, I would advocate for Wednesday, the 23rd.
Okay, so I'm putting it back to council. If you guys want me to move on, or you want to make a motion to postpone?
Is that a city council meeting that night?
No.
That Wednesday?
No.
Last call, and then I'll end this conversation. Victoria?
I motion to move this to the April 23rd.
So there's a motion on the table to postpone strategic planning and reschedule for April 23rd. Kathleen seconds. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Victoria?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Rob? All right, unanimous. We will postpone strategic planning, which was scheduled for this Friday, to April 23rd. And I appreciate all of your consideration for allowing me to be involved, even though I'm not integral in it. What time on the 23rd?
We had scheduled from 8:00 to 1:00, and then on Friday, so I think we'd probably do the same, and then at when we were going to do active shooter training.
Or if it works out, maybe we can switch to the afternoon, if it's easier for some people's schedules.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll maybe entertain going to the afternoon?
Yeah, we'll work on.
Okay, perfect. So we'll get, we'll get notice out with the idea of going to the afternoon on the 23rd. And again, thank you guys very much for allowing me to be involved. Anything else from everybody? We have no executive session planned, so I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Kathleen? Rob, would you like to adjourn? Joel? Kathleen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Indra?
Yes.
Victoria?
Yes.
We are so adjourned. Thank you very much to the audience. Hopefully, we didn't keep you up too late. Look, it's not even 9 o'clock yet. Thank you guys very, very much.